Everyone, I'm sorry, please remain standing for a moment, please. Um, we have a moment of silence tonight for a couple people that were with the district for quite a long time. Um, if everyone could please just uh in a slight bit of remembrance for Teresa. I'm sorry, I'm gonna murder this, Kozaczanski. Kozaczanski and Linda Schaefer um for their years with the district. Thank you so much. Everyone can please silence your electronic devices as needed. If you're a student at the meeting for the purpose of a class and you need paperwork signed off, any board member at the end of the meeting can sign off your paperwork. Motion to move the agenda to the table made by Mr. Grodin, seconded by Mrs. Galligan. Any discussion? All in favor? Hands, people. So ordered. Dr. Evans, any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, I'm recommending that we remove action item T seven from the agenda for tonight. That will be on the agenda at a future date. Donation from Sullivan, we don't have it yet.
Motion to adopt the agenda as amended, made by Mr. Grodin, seconded by Ms. Holmes. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Um, approval of draft minutes, May twenty second, two thousand twenty four. Motion by Mr. Grodin, seconded by Ms. Galligan. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Uh, we gave our student board members a reprieve for the month of June so they could concentrate on graduation. Which brings us to our presentation, graduation rate two thousand twenty three. Dr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Crumley. So uh several weeks back, uh, the State Education Department published uh, every school district's graduation rates, uh, which are the rates that you'll see tonight are four-year graduation rates plus August. So these include, uh, students who entered ninth grade in uh twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen cohort with the expectation that they would have graduated, uh, from high school in twenty twenty three. Um, and here to uh present that tonight are our Director of Secondary Education, Laura Zanrusia, and our St. John Street School Principal and, uh, Principal Glack, I guess, of Monticello High School. It's Jennifer Gore. Uh, Ms. Carlin, is there anything else you wanted to add before they started?
Over here.
Okay, so come on up, please.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. So what you're looking at on here today is from twenty twenty to twenty twenty three is a graduation rate comparison. Uh, Conestelle Central School District is in the dark blue. Uh, New York State average is in the lighter blue. Um, what you see um in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one is our COVID exempt years um going into part of twenty twenty two. There's also a special appeal, so there was a COVID special appeals which went away in twenty twenty three. So this presents the subgroup data for the board policy to segregate the data by certain categories. So that's what's listed up here. The top is the all graduation rate of thirty of seventy five percent, and then you can see it broken down through each of the subgroups for performance. Um some of the subgroups are smaller in population, so you can break down the exact numbers um of the total amount, but that's why there might be some differences in percentages. Okay, so this is a ten-year trend. We we were asked to um create this presentation, so we pulled the ten-year trend of what you see here. The graduation rates that you do see here are were pulled in an August date, so they were not in June, they were in August. Um, you know, what we see here is is some fluctuation. Um, we're not looking for perfection, although we're our our goal is to have a hundred percent graduation rate, but we're looking for progress throughout the years to come. Um, and that's what we're hoping to do, and we'll show you what we're gonna prepare for soon. So you have a pathways to graduation data. Um, on your presentation, if you actually click Pathways to Graduation Data, it'll send you to the link that explains each of the pathways because they can get confusing um with what is encompassed in each of them and wanna kind of explain what the humanities ninety seven percent means, because we do offer different pathways. Thanks to Shannon, we had a good conversation. Um, New York State defaults that if you get the humanities pathway, that is what they register as the pathway. So if you get the humanities one, that's the one they go to. So a student might get the I A P pathway, but New York State recommends if they've got the humanities one, which most students receive, that's what they count. So that's why you see the ninety seven percent. My plan for next year is we will have data for every pathway. Regardless if it reports to the state, if Gen Get I A P and humanities, we'll have a document somewhere to start keeping track of all the multiple pathways our students have been able to achieve. So that's why you see the numbers. Um math and science is broken down separately on the New York State report card. Um, you might see it in the pathways explanation as steam, but they do break it down as math and science depending on what extra regions the student takes. So these are the current practices. Um, having been here for a short amount of time, um, I reached out to the high school, different departments to see what are we currently doing? So there's senior check-ins to see where our seniors are at, what they're missing, what they need. There's discussions on postgraduate plans. There are one-to-one meetings to create action plans for students to help finish the school year, what they need. Um, student meetings for all grade levels, they meet with ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth. There are parent-teacher meetings. We offer after-school tutorials and regions prep, and we have college night. Um, most recently, too, what you might have seen in Parents Square, we did release our notice of advanced coursework as well, so all parents were notified of that. So we're hoping that becomes more of a current practice, too, to engage students in more coursework. Okay, so looking forward, um, obviously we wanna make a lot of progress. Um, you know, we we see the need, and um we are in the process of creating a graduation task force that is going to include staff, parents, students, and administration. Um, this is to create actionable steps um towards a positive um graduation rate. You know, we wanna create, implement, and create action plans for each individual student. Um, this year in developing the um schedule for next year, which we already built, um, we were really strategic in creating A I S classes and putting teachers in that are content-specific. So my hope and my um instruction to our guidance team was when you are placing students in um classes, if we know they are a student that struggles in math, then we're gonna put them in an A I S class with a math teacher. So that way they can get direct instruction for direct support for the area that they are struggling in. Um, again, we've already started to develop this plan. I have a lot more A I S classes than previously had in the district. Um, and we'll continue to improve upon that as we go and see the need. Um, we're making some data-driven decisions and grade-level department meetings. So we can have department meetings all the time, but if they're not driven by data and we're not really speaking to what the needs are and driving our instruction, driving our discussion regarding the data that we have, then we're not gonna make momentum. So what we're doing is we're really gonna look into these grade-level and department meetings and use this data to drive individual pathways, to drive instruction, and to really find where the deficits are and really hone in on being able to make them um not be deficits. Um, pathways to graduation and communication, I've heard you, I've heard from parents, obviously, communication needs to be more. We need to make sure we know when A C Ts are, we need to know when the P S A Ts are, we need to know um everything that is there to be offered, and that communication will continue to and continue to grow and continue to get better. Um, we created the calendar for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and all of those dates are on there, so my plan is to create a uh, Parents Square and informational um sessions that go out to the families so that you, as parents, know exactly what's happening, what's going to happen, and you're an integral part of the decisions that are being made for your child. Uh, transition plan. So we are working with our guidance team to really create transition plans starting in ninth grade. So we know the career path or the pathway for um graduation outcomes for each individual student. Um, we're gonna take a deep dive into the needs, the the wants, the needs, and and what that student is really interested to help them drive their pathway. Um, those conversations with guidance counselors, with administration, with teachers are gonna be ongoing and specific student-specific. Um, and then the last thing is we're really looking at a case management type of system for our students, for our guidance, our guidance team, our uh school social workers, our administration. So a case management system, we're really, we have a case manager load. We're gonna look at those students, we're gonna have specific direct conversations, we're gonna triage, we're going to, you know, uh, really look at that individual student. What's working for one teacher might not be working for another, but those deep conversations happen, and we can cultivate a a path for the student to see success. So these are things we're looking forward to implementing for next year. There are other things, and I plan to work with those as we as we go and really implement to see student success and graduation rates improve. Great idea. So, um, I've been in in contact with Sarah Cousincheck already, we've met. Um, I plan to really, um, while we have been working, our guidance council team has already been working with the middle school guidance team to um specifically look student-specific at the success or or weaknesses of the students incoming. Um, we are working with um the guidance team to develop plans. We actually have guidance members now specifically um will be taking care of the ninth grade. So for it was by letter, so it was I did this way, it will not be. This guidance council will be specifically for ninth grade, so that guidance council will know exactly what needs to be done grade-specific. So ninth grade, we need to know X, Y, and Z. Um, say, of eleventh grade, we need to have these applications in, so that guidance council can focus specifically on that grade and provide extra attention to the needs of that of those students. Um, I can't make a great big impact for that ninth grade. I have some great ideas that I think I would like to start, you know, we're gonna start slowly doing, but something like a ninth-grade academy where they learn the skills to adapt to the high school, where they learn, you know, what it means to, where you need to go to change your schedule, what you need to do to, um, you know, change, you know, your class or or thought you're interested in a sport, but you don't know who to talk to. So, you know, having those point people are gonna be very important. We'll implement things slowly, but I I would like to try to develop a ninth-grade academy and have those, you know, conversations very similar to what I do in the preschool now is where my preschool teachers know exactly what the kindergarten teachers expect, and the and the kids need to know. So it's like coaching. I was a soccer coach, varsity soccer coach. My modified coach and my my J V coach knew exactly the skills and the mindset that I needed on my varsity team because we had those deep conversations, and that's what they were preparing for when they came to my team. So the same thing Sarah and I discussing and the guidance team discussing, knowing exactly what's expected, because sometimes that communication isn't there so that those students are prepared when they come to the middle or to the high school.
So the guidance department's changing, so it's been revamped, so the ninth grade will have
A specific guided Yep, and we've looked at that specifically to see the skill set of our guidance team with working with this killing to look at who would best be suited for that based on the guidance team that's
And our parents would be
Absolutely.
Um, the next question I have, so this is all of New York State. We're a district that similar to ours, compared to
Port, Port Davis is pretty similar. Um, I can sum that data along to you. Their their graduation rates, their trends were higher than ours. Um, what I will say is the pandemic trends and the dips were similar. They just weren't as we're at seventy-five, I don't wanna misspeak, they might have been at eighty-two. So I did look at similar districts in terms of demographics and things like that, but every community is different and have their own thing. Um, I think the the big thing with this that just saying is that I think sometimes that it's not anyone's fault, there's been a reactive stance to a lot of things. And what we're really trying to do is put action steps in place that are more proactive. So it's not December, and we've got a senior and we're like, oh, they've got four credits, we have to get them by June. We're gonna know about that when that that kiddo's a junior or sophomore.
Have they started doing that this year, contacting parents when the children are doing that?
Yeah, from what I've seen in student notes, they'll contact if students are in danger of failing. Um, I've seen it predominantly in in seniors. I think we need to start doing that sooner. Um, I think that's that case management model, right? So there's a team that is going to be, so your child is is a team that will address those things. They will have conversations, uh, you know, and there will be detailed notes, um, and accountability to make sure that, you know, we are checking in with the parents, make sure that you are aware, you know what is needed, you know, what supports are available and and provide you with that information so we can work together to see the success of your child. So that's already been, June seventeen is our first date. Um, I have student representation, parent representation, teacher representation. Um, so we are meeting June seventeenth to just discuss logistics, good meeting times, what works for everyone. Um, my first goal is to identify root causes. We can't put action plans into place until I know what is an underlying issue from a student perspective. What the student might say, I know all the classes they have to offer, I just didn't think I could take them, or I had no idea what classes were to offer. We need to identify the root problem. I can't, I don't wanna fix a broken leg with a band. So we're gonna get the task force together to listen to parents, teachers, staff members to find out what are the root causes of why we're here? Um, and where, what steps can we take to move forward?
Well, I don't, I, I mean, it's not possible. I don't know what the committee makeup is presently.
Um, staff, parents, students, and administration, I
Yeah, we we reached out to the building administrators to say who would be good parent representatives. Um, but you know, if one or two board members wanted to be on it, we can make space. It's an option, but I guess, you know, if the board to two board members, I would say, you know, typically on on minis like this, I think it's usually like two board members.
We could address it at the reorganizational meeting and add it on as a, you know, one of those standing, one of those standing committees.
Right now, I'm on that committee, and I'm even on June seventeen.
So they're two different, alright.
Yeah, they're
The committee you're on now is like the graduation commencement. So I, I think probably we're close enough where it'd be eight. I mean, how many meetings would you have between now and July second?
Well, we're having one June seventeenth to determine what will be the best for everyone to work out.
Okay.
Um, I would like to have one more before July second. I would like to have two, but if not
Wait, hold off, Bonn. And just that may be the one on June seventeen.
I'll have a schedule then, so that might help whatever board member who wants to be on it, because you can probably see a schedule of what the meetings are gonna look like. Ms. Cora, I just wanted you and and Mrs. Amber, you can just kind of expand a little bit on the guidance piece, because I know Susan Russo has had questions about this before, but so I know this year we started to transition from just having the alphabet split forever and having that that same guidance counselor to this year, they get a guidance counselor in ninth grade that goes with them to tenth and eleventh. So we've started to do that already this year, and so the plan is instead of splitting it by alphabet and doing that, we're gonna have one counselor for all the ninth. They follow them to tenth. They follow them to eleven, so in essence, the student has the same guidance counselor for four years so that the counselor has the opportunity to get to know their students, and then they loop back around again. Right, so we, right, so that's, that's Similar, but not. So that way, um, what we're finding is they're pulled in all different directions, and if we want to really focus, say, on the ninth grade, I'd like to have a guidance counselor that can be walking into those classrooms, providing, you know, in some type of in uh instruction, pathways, instruction, um, pre-actualization, et cetera, et cetera, to that ninth-grade team. So they're really focused, they'll work specifically with the, you know, the the A P that is specifically um with the ninth grade. Um, and that, you know, and so we'll provide, be able to provide more um strategic instruction, support, and guidance um to students and their families, because we're, you know, that guidance council is specifically focused on what is required in the ninth grade. You know, what we see in ninth grade is that, you know, they're, they don't know how, they don't have pretty skills. They may not have those executive functioning things to manage in a in a big, large building. So we'll focus on those types of things. Do dispute resolution type, you know, thing that they're having conflict with peers, how can we support you in that? You know, making those decisions and 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 supporting them through their success to help them get to be successful in the tenth grade or not.
Have you had something?
When you were enjoying the hundred percent graduation rate as to this, I wanted to know what key, what magic are you looking to use, harness, that you gained insight there to sprinkle here as you as you transition?
So very similar to like this case management system and and these data grade-level meetings. We have every day a team huddle. And that huddle is like when you go to a doctor in the city, um, and there is multiple professionals coming together to solve your ailment, right? Um, and we every day discuss students, whether it's positive or negative, to come to a solution to be able to better support an action plan the next day. So these types of things, although it's gonna be in a much larger scale, will occur because then we're really looking at the individual child. We're not just looking at the ninth grade. We're looking at those individual children and and finding exactly what their needs, what makes them tick, and and what's the barriers that, and those root causes that we talked about, preventing them from being successful. And I think that's the key thing that happens at St. John Street is, you know, yes, it's smaller, so it allows us that opportunity, but we have a lot of faculty in in high school, which we can do these types of of this work. Is we were specific and and we talked to the students, we 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 have many, many parent uh meetings, so that during that huddle, if we have a student that's struggling or has an attendance issue, we bring the parent in during our huddle. We talk about concerns, we talk about, you know, what are the options that we have to help provide success? It's not, you know, every kid, yes, we had a hundred percent graduation rate last year. It is, we don't, we have one student right now we're struggling with for this year, but for the most part, that type of teamwork, that deep, you know, courageous conversations has helped us how allow these kids to feel safe, to feel heard, and 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 to take ownership in their education.
I have three questions. So the first one is on the the ten-year trend. So we know that in twenty-two and twenty-three, they were allotted the um exemption, the exemption. So you could arguably say that these numbers are inflated because between fifty and sixty-four percent, they wouldn't have been graduating. So when you compare them to previous years, those numbers are inflated, and as we move on, is there a way to pull those out in order to actually see the progress or no progress that we're going to make in the next two to three years when kids actually have to pass the regions at sixty-five?
So we can disaggregate it out, we can pull out the last set, like the COVID years, I can go back and look at the students' region scores, and any student who did get that exemption, we can take them out of the count and get those. Is that what you're asking for that percentage with those examples?
Right, I think it, I think when, I know that twenty twenty-one, but in twenty-two and twenty-three, you're gonna see a a really larger dip from twenty eighteen, from eighty-seven percent to seventy-nine, you're probably gonna see eighty-seven to fifty? Eighteen, sixty?
Yeah, I can pull, that that I can pull.
Um, cuz that's gonna, that's gonna assist us in analyzing the data moving forward, because they're not gonna have that exemption. The next question I have is on the pathway on graduation data. Is, so in order to graduate, you don't need a pathway in humanities, cuz it's ninety-seven percent versus our seventy-five? Can you tell the difference there?
The ninety-seven percent is of the seventy-five percent of the cohort that graduated, ninety-seven percent of them graduated with the humanities.
Gotcha, yes, okay. Then the last question is on, you were referring to um the S A Ts and and P S A Ts and things. Is every student going to take those? Because I know some students, their parents aren't going to look at the parents square and and sign them up and do whatever they have to do, so is all students going to be put into that track?
I think all students will be educated on the process, and and I would love for them to, because that is an, that's something that many of them will need to go to college, or, you know, even to community college. I think it is a good experience for them to have. I think it's a test situation that also helps give us and them as a as a student an idea of their capabilities. I think it's an educational springboarding piece that we can provide opportunity to to drive other conversations with these students. Um, that is a discussion I will bring to my A Ps and to my guidance team to make those decisions. That's not something I'm gonna say yes or no to today, because that's something I have to really, you know, work with my team to see if that's the best option for us, but that's something definitely we can consider.
Because I know as a parent, you ask my child, I'm gonna sign your prescription, but no, you're not.
Right.
I would say the parent, yes, you are, right. So if I don't know if we can maybe, parents need to opt out. I I think every student, if you're gonna ask some of those students, they're gonna say, no, I don't wanna take it.
And I think
But it's to their benefit to take it.
Well, on that too, like things associated with taking it, so I don't know if that plays into some students not maybe having the ability to pay if there's any type of I don't know, scholarship or money that could be allocated, because I know we have kids that are smart, bright, and they just probably don't have that means.
I believe the College Board does have some
We do have a sliding scale, I believe, some kind of some
Scholarship, if you will.
And I believe our free and reduced lunch students don't pay for it, and we also have some, you know, some title allocations that could be used for that as well. So we'll look into all of that to help you answer that question, and I'll be able to give more in depth once I really get in there. Thank you for flying.
Any other questions? Thank you so
Been instrumental in in working and making, helping us make some decisions, help further further those conversations. I'm glad they're happening. Free huddles. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Grodin.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion and say consent agenda items G one through M one as a group.
Uh, just for approval. Thank you, Mr. Grodin. Uh, do I have a second on that? By Ms. Jersey, any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Thank you very much, Mr. Grodin. Uh, moving on from there, we have board roundtable. We'll start on the left. Ashley?
Okay, so I was able to attend uh M H A's M D J concert. It was great. It was uh, in the uh I guess it started around six-thirty, I was able to to go there and not have to take off work, so that was awesome, they will make that one. And um, there was an art show involved as well, that's uh, had an artwork posted around the school. Uh, I was really just pleased with seeing all the parents, but also uh, just seeing how great of a job our teachers do, and uh and the song selection and just how well the students how well they're achieving at their young age as far as with their musical instruments and uh, also just enjoying themselves. So uh saw that this week, also going to Little League games. Um, but I also wanna bring up um something that came up this week, which it has to do with surface talk on it. It has to do with a situation that occurred with um student not going into detail, just wanted to just bring up the fact that it's I'd like to know a little bit more information about the method of correcting negative destruction and destructive and dangerous behaviors with restoring practice, because we've been using this code of conduct for a couple of years now. And um, I think it would be worthwhile to get more data on the benefits of using this practice, because it is fairly new. And so I just, my time to talk on it, so I have some questions for um, the curriculum uh, portion of this meeting, but I just wanna bring that up. Thank you.
Jen?
Uh, I don't, I haven't.
Helen?
Um, I attended the varsity awards ceremony last night. It was great.
Congratulations to all the athletes and thank you to everyone who had a hand in putting that on. Um, I think I, we did a couple of capital project meetings or committees or something.
Couple.
And I think that's it.
Thank you, Helen. Uh, Wendy?
I too attended the athletic award, varsity, varsity award ceremony last night. Um, congratulations to all the students who participated and, um, for all the awards given out. It was, it was a wonderful evening, um, just wonderful. Um, I also attended the, um, just before we had retiring teachers and, uh, we had a wonderful, uh, gathering. And I want to say thank you to all those teachers that are leaving our district and thank them for their service. I also attended Sullivan County School Board Association meeting. We had a guest speaker on, uh, school bus, electric school buses. I would have thought that, um, he would have not have been received so well, but he actually came with a twist and I, I would like to give you his, uh, PowerPoint. He came with the, um, with the, uh, to the table. He's helping, uh, with getting grant funding. But he had a, a million sources of places where there's money to be had in order for schools to go forward. He also explained, he was out of New Jersey actually though, um, lives up here. But he actually explained that there's a certain amount of free money out there. And that, um, first come, first served. So if in the future we ever want to move in that program, there's like three pages of different, a, a ton of information of where to get possibly assistance for the money, not telling us what we need to do or not do. But I just thought I'd like to share that information that I have for safekeeping if ever we needed in our future. And that's about it on my end.
He said it was money.
I had the distinct honor to attend the second annual varsity awards last night. And I have to say, thank God for our athletic director Jasper because never been a better time to be a Panther. It's evident, you see the tennis courts, then you see the banners. It looks like three hundred. Welcome to our arena now. And I love that he is establishing his claw marks in this program and giving a bite to our students where before they might have not had that voice. It is evident that the sky is maybe the limit. When it is, we just passed this bond. Thank you constituents. You guys are amazing. Let me repeat that. Thanks for passing it. Watch as we go and we become the super house in Sullivan County. And I'll tell you who's at the lead is our A D. That's it.
Thank you, Todd. Victoria?
Hi, to attend varsity award last night, um, teacher retiree prior. I want to thank her for her services years. I attended the No Place for Eight yesterday and that was by far, I learned a lot yesterday from the students that were there. And, uh, we had a lot of work to do in the district and the staff that are reading it. They're definitely going to make changes in the district with the positive.
Thank you, Victoria. Um, I also attended the, what, two or three capital improvement meetings, um, to come to a conclusion for, um, construction manager position, um, which we are appointing this evening. Um, the teacher retiree ceremony prior to this meeting. Um, thank you once again to all the teachers who, uh, gave years and years of dedication to the district to help our students and, uh, move us forward. And also varsity awards, um, actually had the honor to go on stage and present the, uh, present an award. Um, both the coaches, uh, Mr. Jasper, um, everybody there to see the smile on his assistant's face when she got the largest ovation out of the entire evening was stupendous. Um, she was glowing when she got her applause. I think she got double applauses actually. Um, and that was, uh, that was very nice. Um, so thank you very much to everyone for all they do. Moving on, we have correspondence outcomes, uh, none listed at this time. Policy committee memo, I don't think there's going to be a lot there. And the next meeting, we do have a policy meeting.
Correct. So there, there are two items tonight on the agenda, two second reading and adoptions on, uh, policies and corresponding regulations. Uh, those come to us from NISBA, the New York State School Boards Association. Uh, and the next policy committee meeting is on June twentieth at five thirty P M. And I think we're back in the library at that.
Any questions regarding policy? Thank you, Dr. Evans. Moving on to capital project update. Once again, Dr. Evans.
Thank you, President Crumley. So as was mentioned earlier, uh, there were, uh, a few capital project committee meetings, uh, since we last met. And, uh, we are, uh, tonight proposing the appointment of schoolhouse construction as the, uh, to award the construction management RFP two. Um, they are out of Delhi. Uh, they've done a number of, uh, projects similar to ours, uh, and, uh, they are fairly regional and local. Um, uh, Ms. Jersey and I, uh, along with, uh, Mr. Lewis and Mr. Jasper, met with our architects a couple of days ago to begin preliminary discussions on the design of the field house uh, at the, uh, at the Ed Kennedy Field. Um, and just kind of starting with the layout, you know, how much, how many lockers should we have in locker rooms? How big should it be? How big should the training room be, the coaches rooms, et cetera? Uh, one of the questions that came up and after discussing it earlier with Ms. Phaila was around the concession stand and whether or not that should be a grab and go concession stand or a kind of full kitchen concession stand that would have like a flat top and maybe a deep fryer in it. Uh, I seem to recall Ms. Jersey about a hundred eighty thousand dollars difference between the two. Obviously.
Like one thirty, one fifty?
One fifty maybe, the, the one including the griddle and, and a deep fryer. Um, I think what was suggested as an alternative would be to have enough open space on that level where you could have grills going if you wanted to serve hot dogs and hamburgers. Uh, or also a grab and go kitchen. You could plug in a hot dog roller and it would be sufficient. Um, if you were to have things like deep fryers, flat top griddles, you might be adding to health inspections and other maintenance costs. So I think right now, unless the board or the capital project committee wants to meet on it for a further discussion, I think we're kind of of the mindset of a grab and go that.
Well, I think the concern was we don't want to say later on, oh, we should have done that. So I think one of the questions he had was if we do have the kitchen or whatever you want to say in there, does a district staff have to be the one who's cooking? I think that was one of the things that was brought up. So I don't know. I think they were going to find that out or somebody was going to find that out.
We can look, uh, nice, our, our insurance provider would guide us on that, but we can find out.
Cause I think the fear is not to do it and then wish that we had not.
Short sighted.
Right.
I want to know about the integration of a food truck and a smoker and that it can also go with you, that it would represent us when we have our football go to another place. And then Monticello would know, be known for that. Because if you have the truck, then that's not only something you could have here, but it could also go.
We already don't have enough parking.
We're expanding that. So we can park it at the Coach's Bowl.
Well, we'll look into the liability in terms of if a, a full service kitchen we're running.
We'll have a C tech.
Who would actually?
Seamlessly with our C tech students and then they could support that and they would learn and it would be employable.
Understood, Mr. Grodin. So we're looking at, we're looking into the concession a little further. Anything further on capital improvement?
Yes. Um, so also, uh, unfortunately though, uh, we are very proud of the outcome of the tennis course and that they're open. Uh, we have noticed some unfortunate, uh, I guess heaving is probably the best description of it, which is where kind of the subsurface kind of pushes up. Uh, you may recall that, uh, in the initial construction, uh, there was an error where the poles were drilled too closely together and that those were then covered up. Uh, we knew about this and that they were covered up, but we did get additional warranty on that and the rest of the surface. So that has heaved a little bit in those spots. And then there's another location on a different court where there's some other evidence of heaving. So we've immediately contacted our previous architect and our previous construction manager. They came out last week with a contractor. Uh, CPL, who was our previous architect, gave us an engineer's report uh, that basically said this is premature, that it shouldn't be doing that. And that, uh, warranty coverage should be given by the contractor. Now there, we are anticipating pushback from the contractor. However, either way, um, we believe it is completely covered under warranty. So we have referred that to legal counsel and our current architects, uh, because they might get involved at some point to provide an opinion of their own or testimony to that effect. Okay, but I do, it's still playable. However, it certainly is not, um, what we have expected at this, this early in it. And it's only on that one, on one court, uh, but the other, the post is a different court. But I will keep the board updated on that as we progress.
Any questions regarding capital improvement? Thank you, Dr. Evans. Um, upcoming events are listed on the agenda. Um, there are plenty of things on here that aren't. There's the eighth grade moving up ceremony. There's the academic, uh, achievement awards dinner, um, or ceremony. Uh, there's plenty of stuff on the district calendar, so keep your eyes open for that. Uh, community events, there is a slew of articles listed in your agenda. Ashley, do we have any questions or comments from the public? None at this time? Thank you, Ashley. Uh, moving on from there, we have our superintendent update and information, Dr. Evans.
Thank you again, President Crumley. So a few things I'd like to highlight first and, uh, introduce and reintroduce some people to our district first. Uh, our new district clerk is Anne Marie Foss. Cross will begin, uh, Monday, correct? So welcome aboard with looking forward to your work here. Uh, I also want to recognize and congratulate Jeanette Sains Polat, uh, Mrs. Sains Polat. She is our new Spanish teacher in the middle school. She's become officially certified. She's been filling in that position for, I think, a couple of years now. Um, and she was originally a teaching assistant with us and has worked hard to get her Spanish certification. Uh, we're so appreciative of your hard work and, and thank you for stepping up. Thank you, the same for. The board may have heard, uh, or read in the newspaper that the governor is proposing a ban on student usage of smartphones. I want to call out that distinction because, um, it's not a complete proposed ban on all phones uh, by students in school. Uh, she's announced her intention to introduce that in the next upcoming legislative season, which would be starting in January of twenty twenty-five. So one might expect that in her budget proposal for the following year. She did draw a distinction between allowing students to have and use flip phones while in school under her proposal that would still allow them to call and text. Um, she is though proposing a ban on smartphones, which, you know, allow them, allow anyone to do more than just call and text. So stay tuned on that. I will remind the board that we do have a, uh, cellphone task force uh, that is looking at this and how it might relate to our code of conduct. And I don't know, Ms. Carlin, do you have any updates on that presently?
I don't. They have their next meeting next week. Um, I think Victoria, you're on that committee, correct?
No.
You're on code of conduct, okay.
But they're.
They're tied.
They're tied because any, any cellphone decision would have to be encapsulated in our code of conduct. Okay, there may be a subcommittee of the code of conduct.
It is a subcommittee, yeah. And at this point, they haven't gotten to the point where they're making any recommendations yet. They're really just having discussions.
Yeah, so we're not anticipating any changes for the upcoming year for, for. Okay. Yeah. So it would, any changes that we would consider, the board would consider would be in the code of conduct relative to student cell phones.
In the earliest, we would, you know, do anything would be January.
Yeah, we're, it's not going to be in the first draft, okay? Um, proposed amendments like commissioners regulations on participation in athletics. So you may recall at the last meeting, I kind of shared with you, uh, proposed, uh, proposed amendments to commissioners regulations, one thirty-five point one, one thirty-five point four, one thirty-five point five regarding, uh, mixed competition and extra class activities. Uh, there are many who have expressed concerns in these proposed changes. In particular, the potential for what are being considered significant adverse effects of the possibility of male athletes participating in mixed competition with female athletes in traditional, uh, female sports. So what is being proposed is that if a school does not offer boys and girls activities, so think soccer, i- if, if a school offers those, then boys have to go with the boys team and girls have to go with the girls team. If they don't, and again, at the last meeting I shared was volleyball. So right now, the only volleyball we offer is girls volleyball. Under the previous regulations and guidelines, the school district and the section can kind of set criteria to not allow male athletes to participate in that if they were to create a significant adverse effect. In other words, that there was some type of safety concern or they would dominate competition in some way. Or that they would take a kind of a roster spot against a, a female athlete. Under the proposed amendments, that type of review would not exist. So in other words, if we didn't offer boys volleyball under this new proposed, these proposed changes and a male athlete wanted to go out for volleyball, all they would basically need is a parent sign off and their, their doctor or the school physician to okay it. So a number of people have written to the commissioner on that. I, uh, at the end of the day, yesterday, uh, wrote one as well. And I think that's in my report. You should have access to that, expressing my concerns over it. Um, and it's particularly around those issues that, you know, I appreciate that, you know, there shouldn't be discrimination in any form. However, it should not be at the expense of female athletes either and putting female athletes in a position where, uh, they might lose spots, they might get hurt, or that competition in female athletics might get dominated by male athletes in it because there's no male volleyball, for example. So I've shared that with you. Uh, there's another letter that was written very well by the, uh, New York State Director of Public High School Athletics, uh, Dr. Robert Zayas. I referenced it in my letter. The board wants a copy of that. I can furnish one as well. Uh, the board had also asked about contact information and you'll find that in my report. So right now it is a public comment period that is open until mid-July. You can certainly, as individuals, write to our local region, write to Chancellor Lester Young, write to this public comment, uh, email address. Um, I think was as, as was mentioned, the last meeting, our assembly, uh, it's the assembly that appoints regents. So right now that's Assemblywoman Gunther. Um, you can do that as individuals, you can do that as, as an entire board and, and, and do one letter. Uh, but I just wanted to pass that information along to you. Questions on that? Um, and then, uh, we are in the midst of, you know, personnel searches and evaluations, uh, and more to come on that. Uh, and also some student recognitions. Uh, congratulations to our valedictorian and salutatorian, Kritika Tolufter and Rachel Zer, our graduating class. Congratulations to Jaden Barrios and Tafari Smith, who are recently inducted as fellows to the New York State Education Department's My Brothers Keeper Program. Earlier this morning, uh, along with, uh, Ms. Gore, Dr. Furman, Mr. Jasper and their parents, uh, the Orange County Intersclassical Athletic Association recognized our scholar athletes, among others, um, Nathan Borco and Alexandra Dietz. So congratulations to them. And earlier this week, Abby Morse, uh, competed in the state golf tournament. And, uh, later this week or tomorrow, Tyree Shaw and Quentin Lisiaga will be competing in the state track and field league. So, uh, congratulations to Abby.
Questions for Dr. Evans? Thank you very much.
So if males are allowed to compete in female sports, a female, a female student gets badly injured, what will the school district do then?
Well, if any student gets injured in any sport, it would be covered by insurance.
I understand that, but if a male student injures a female student badly, I mean, they.
So, well, I have yet to see any opinion expressed by our insurance carrier about this proposed amendment. Um, I don't know if they're considering one at this time. I would presume that that would be covered by our insurance carrier because the student would be participating in the sport consistent with the commissioners regulations if they were adopted. Um, and by doing such, we're abiding by commissioners regulations and assuming the protocols were followed there, which is the parent signs off on it. And the, you know, the student's position or the school's position signs off on it. I believe that, you know, insurance would cover as we sit currently. Okay. Yeah, I mean, there, there's a lot to be determined yet. Um, and that's. Okay, yeah, I mean, th- there's a lot to be determined yet. Um, and that's one of my questions in here too. I, I think there, there's a lot that still needs to be meted out, you know, because there's other questions like, well, let's say you offer boys volleyball and girls volleyball, but you only get three boys to go out for boys volleyball. You're not going to continue with that boys volleyball program. Does that mean they then can compete on the girls team? Yeah. So there's, there's lots of questions that the regulations still have yet to answer.
Any other questions for uh Dr. Evans? Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to Assistant Superintendent for Business, uh, Lisa. That's the T seven that we took off donation from uh one eighty. Um, that was going to be to the Cook School?
No, that's for the uh, that's for the Fit Deck.
Okay, that was for the
Yeah, so we're nearing the point of installation of the Fit Deck. The first step would be for the official donation from Sullivan one eighty, and we're working on the language for that now. Um, and then we're hoping to have that installed in July. I think everything goes well.
Thank you very much. Uh, move. So no question for Lisa. Uh, moving on to Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, uh, Ms. Carlin.
Thank you, President Crumley, and good evening, everyone. Um, so I have three contracts for your review and approval tonight. The first one is the Management of America Consulting. Um, we've been with this particular vendor for three years. Um, they provide us with our SCAT trainings and consultant services, uh, as well as materials. They've changed their name. Um, trying to remember what they were called last year.
Step by step?
See, I guess, you're correct. Thank you, Dr. Evans. Step by step. Um, so it may look different to you, but it's the same vendor. They're getting larger. Um, so they must have been bought out. The second uh contract that I have is Better Lesson. Um, so Better Lesson does a lot of different kind of coaching of um, teachers. They also provide keynote speakers. Um, and so we are using them to provide our keynote speaker for the first day of school in September. And they als- also are going to do some work with our administrators this summer on um expectation. So the fact, or the, the premise that we need to work on expecting high, high amounts from our students. Um, so we talk about graduation rate. We expect our students to perform at a hundred percent. Um, so changing that mindset of raising the bar, and when we raise the bar, our students tend to meet that, that raise in the bar. Um, so they're going to work with our administrators on that mindset change, and then they're going to do keynote and then do some work in the fall with um with our teachers as well. So that's that contract. Um, and then the last one is a business contract. So it's a private school contract. They've had a change in consulting service. Um, and so they're, they're um bringing someone new on for the remainder of the school year. Any questions?
Um, I have a question about the um SCAT contract. So, um, we've been doing it for a while. Do you have any, like, so it's a hu- uh, it's a huge commitment. It's like of, of time, of resources and everything. Do you have, it's been now going three or four years. So do we have data that it's working?
Um, so we don't have data that it's working as well as we were hoping that it was going to work, but we don't know if it's because of that particular reason, or there's other factors. Um, so we do have data that it is helping with our tier two and our tier three interventions and providing teachers with that knowledge and expertise. Um, the, the individuals that come in from the companies are actually coaches, and they go into the classrooms, they watch a lesson. Um, or they watch teachers work with a student in small group, and then they give them feedback. Um, so that's really what this portion of it is. So initially, it was teachers understanding the programming, and now it's putting it into use and seeing if they're using it appropriately. Um, I will tell you, this is probably going to be the last year that we put this much uh money into that program, because I think everybody, it's either you have it or you don't at this point, right? And, and so I think we're at the point where people have gotten the instruction that they need, the video that they need, and we've given them the coaching that they need. Um, and they're, they're using it with fidelity and they're going to get better. So, um, hopefully, we will have some more data, but it takes a little bit of time. Like, those things don't happen, unfortunately, overnight. And so you know, that's my hope that we will see.
Okay. Um, so, uh, so you're saying this is not a lot of coaching specifically, it's more the SGA licenses and
Yeah, it's a combination of things
Right.
in that, in that amount. So it's licensing, it's the coaching, when they come in throughout the year in person, they do some um, they work with our three level teams and do some zooming with them in, in between to kind of catch up and see what they've been using and if it's working and giving feedback on the lesson. So there's a a lot of stuff that's built into that throughout the year.
Um, and so what will you be using like next year to assess further?
Well, our scores, you know, really looking, I mean, we have our three, three scores. Um, obviously, those won't come out probably until the end of the summer, so that will be a good data point for us. Um, we also have, you know, N W D A that we look at, common assessments are happening. We're building those up from elementary level, middle school, eventually to high school. So those are the things that will tell us, you know, where, where our literacy stands right now. Um, and, you know, that right, that's the hope. So we really have been working hard um, this year, and I, and I see great improvements in starting to understand why we have to look at data. Um, something that we really haven't been doing in previous years, like, you know, it's very easy to say, well, the student is not doing well. That's our opinion, but we don't know why they're not doing well, because we're not looking at all the things that go into instruction and, and assessment. And so that's kind of the, the backbone of it, and we're really starting to progress in that area. Um, you know, I have a really great team. I'm very lucky that they have a lot of data knowledge. Um, so you're going to start hearing a lot more about data teaming and looking at um results and you know, using what we know from those results to drive our instruction. So it's kind of a, it's a process and it takes time.
Sure. I mean, I get it. I guess maybe next year or next time we have something like that. It'd be really nice to see some data, especially for a program that's been in progress for like three years. Cause I remember when we did, we approved this, initially, it was like, oh, we're going to do this. It's going to have great results elsewhere, and it's like now we're still improving hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we are not getting the same story results as we were sold initially. And it's like, well, what's, you know, is it, does it not a good fit for us? Is it whatever? Well, I don't know what it is, but like, so.
Victoria?
Yeah.
MGT?
Have a whole entire last three, last three we had about coaching, I think Brett Cardinal came in.
No, so this is coaching on that program. So that's an intervention program for tier two and tier three intervention. And so they come in and they watch teachers' lessons specific to this program. The coaching that you heard about from Rick Cardinal and, and our staff that came in to talk about coaching, they're employees of the district. They're doing pedagogical coaching. They're walking into classrooms and watching tier one lessons and giving feedback on the tier one lesson. So it's completely different. Well, it's not the last year we're going to be using it. It's the last year we're going to be investing this kind of money in coaching. Because, you know, like I said, they, I think they should be at the point now where it's effective and they're using it effectively, and we don't need to continue to support that. In addition, we can use our instructional coaches to do some of, you know, now that everybody's kind of at a place where they are using it with fidelity, the instructional coaches can go in and do their own observations and offer feedback.
And the other one, is it that keynote speaker that it sees it that in here?
Um, I think if you go to their attachment A, it does talk about what they're providing.
And do we know who the keynote speaker is?
Um, not yet. We've been kind of talking about what our goals are for next year and what we want that keynote speaker to talk about, and it's going to be along the same lines that I just mentioned, raising the bar, increasing our, you know, raising our expectations and, and seeing performance increase out of our students, believing in our students that you know, they can do great things, um, and not just assuming that, well, maybe that's too hard for them, so we're not going to put them there because we don't want them to fail. So really expecting that our students can, can do great things. That's, that's really where we're trying to, to move everybody next year.
We're, I understand that, but we're not going to put students in advanced classes without making sure that they are
No, absolutely not. Now, we're not looking for students to fail, but we're also not looking to continue to say, I don't think they can do it without having the data and the conversation to back that statement.
Once again, will we even migrate um homework policy if we're going to raise the bar?
So actually, that was going to be my last part. Um, I am the facilitator of a grading committee that we're just getting started. Um, and so we are going to be looking at our current grading policy, whether or not it's sufficient, or and whether or not we need to make any changes in addition to grading procedures within each building. Um, so that committee is just in the process of getting formed. Um, so I will give you regular updates as to where we are with that committee as well.
And that would any changes to grading would have to ultimately come through policy.
Yep, absolutely.
Right, so similar to what we did, what happened with the uh eligibility policy, it'd be that type of approach. Yeah, so the, the grading policy committee is kind of an ad hoc committee. They would bring policy recommendations to the policy committee. That the policy committee would consider and then decide to make changes or not.
No. That's going to be a long discussion.
No, and it, it, it's, it needs to be a long discussion. It's a pretty significant.
This is the year.
February?
I, well, I think to come to the board with recommendations February, but before there would be any changes in overall policy, which
It was one of my previous reports. I can dust that off. Yeah, I think February, I was going to report to the policy committee by February, if I recall.
And, and Vicky, to your question about Better Lesson, if you look at a, a Exhibit A, there's like a, a chart, and it talks about um an in-person workshop that where it says leader, that's our principals. That's the workshop they're going to be doing this summer. And then um underneath it says teacher, so it's one day interactive learning experiences to build a clear understanding of um target topics. And then underneath that, uh, it says keynote.
Any other questions for Mrs. Carlin?
As far as the um MGT uh contract, I'm aware of it, say that Chase, uh, Emma Chase, elementary's principal, so, and you know, had a really great encouraging as far as saying the benefits of this SGA. So he's saying it's not, although, um, not, he, he writes here, not possible to attribute growth to any single thing. Um, part of that would be this program. So in this, it's also saying, um, and I realize everybody read this, but just for the benefit of your own prep, uh, the district literacy goal for this first year of five-year plan is fifty-nine percent. And students exiting, exiting Chase are at seventy-three and a half or above grade level and their reading ability. That's one thing. And the other thing, Chase Building K through five Literacy Bowl was sixty point seven percent. Chase was at fifty-seven percent in the spring. So three points down, but now it's at sixty-three percent. Now it's about three point five, three percent. Um, and then not only that, as many students are only a few points under the score needed for them to be considered on grade level. Therefore, we are anticipating positive increases for next year. So part of that is this, this program. So when you're saying that this is going to basically be the last possible year for this contract, because we'll be doing something different next year, possibly oh, no, because everyone will have learned by now.
The hope is that we won't use the level of support that we have been having. So we've been actually moving down in level of support from year one. So year one, um, the contract was significant, and there was, you know, a lot of handholding because it was brand new. Year two, we, we brought it down a little bit. Last year was year three, well, it was the year two and a half of that, we kind of started mid-year. Um, to the, you're currently, this is the lowest level of support we've had. And so then, again, the hope is to um pretty much, you know, level up the support the year after by using our instructional coaches. And you know, like individuals that might need a little extra support or new staff. And so we would be able to provide that without having a amount of coaching to our building.
So, um, what's the percent cost, say, increase or increases? Are you saying that we need a less support, so it probably costs a lot of the rest years?
Um, I believe, I can't remember, Lisa, what it was this current year. We're probably down about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Like it's, it used to be that much more last year, and you're
Okay, yeah, and this entire program has been grant funded. None of it came out of the general fund. Um, so it was either funded for us or two, which was the second stimulus grant that ended last September. Um, this particular, which is why you'll notice, um, you know, we're, we're going to be invoiced at the beginning of the year because that our grant, this third stimulus, and the September thirtieth, and so we would need to pay for this by that in order to be able to use those funds. So that's another reason why we're decreasing the level of support, because both grants are gone, and we don't plan to use the general fund for it.
Uh, my other question would be recording, so these are my questions about the rest of practices. You've been doing this for two years. Am I wrong in that two years?
Um, not, not consistently. I think the high school, safe to say, this is really the first year and, and we haven't done it fully. Um, we've kind of just started the training there. It was not done last year. Um, the elementary building, um, I would say beginning of this year was probably their half-year mark. Um, so really, we're, we're just about a year and a half in at the elementary schools.
Okay.
Um, so it's kind of an ongoing process, and it looks differently in, at each grade. It looks different at each grade level.
Okay, and then um also there's many public schools that utilize this, such as Buffalo, Rochester. How long have they been in that, like five years?
Well, originally, it was called Restorative Justice, and it came out of the prison system. Um, and, and kind of trickled into schools because it, there was a lot of commonalities and what, you know, what's working in, in the prison system could potentially work in schools. And so I think a lot of those bigger city schools started many years ago. I first started with a sort of practice back in two thousand thirteen. It's my first experience with it. Um, it's kind of morphed a little bit and, and changed. Some of the premises are the same, and now that's what's called Restorative Practice instead of Justice. Um, but really, it's about building relationships and trying to be proactive, and then if, you know, things happen, restoring and repairing harm that's been done, so that those relationships can be built back up.
And are there, say, um, available magazine articles or maybe just something, the consultants that we do is like you for, is that, could they provide some just data of some sort, saying that these schools that have been doing this for five plus years, this is their, this is their academic outcome of their, you know, this is how it's improved academic measures, or this is how it's improved, um, not just like less referrals, but perhaps just, um, be the the people in the school, if school kids in the school, just are they, um, are they remaining in the school and protesting and graduating into the healthy, healthy environment? My assumption is yes, because that's what we're being told, you know, sold on. But I'd like some just more information, if possible, from you or, or whoever.
I mean, I'm sure we can ask them their experiences. I don't know if they've had experiences directly with Buffalo and Rochester, and I know Cheryl has done some work with Syracuse. Um, you know, I'm, I'm looking at Jane Gore right now. She uses uh restorative practices with the Alt Ed students. Um, probably the most that any other building or, you know, in our, in our school district, just because of the nature of our students in Alt Ed and the small grouping. Um, you know, I'll let you speak as to what you see the benefit.
Our students really work for the sort of, sort of, they ask for if there's a, if there's a, the yonder objects to the high school, um, they answer, sort of, have those discussions with us to share their uh, so our students are actually asking for the type of conversations, and, and we see progress with them because of it.
So if that means that, I would think maybe they're going to have some kind of information that she can.
Yes, I can ask them, but what I'm Yes, I can ask them, but what I'm, you had asked for specific school districts. I don't know if they would on those school districts.
But there's been, okay.
We can provide the board with resources and, and research on the effectiveness of restorative practices.
What I'm really looking for too is, I know that research, research, they can give me a paper of, you know, something that might be a small sample. What I'm looking for is if this has truly been around for ten years or so, there should be wealth of information of some sort, especially from the consultants that would say this for a fact is how we increase our community, the feel of our culture versus. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mrs. Carly? Thanks, Teresa. Moving on to action items, before we get to the motions, is there any action items that we want to be voted on separately? Yes. So we're good. Mr. Groden?
As like, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to take action items T one through T six, T eight, nine, ten.
As a group?
As a group.
Do I have a second on that? Made by Ms. Riley. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Mr. Groden?
But then I'd like to make a motion to take action item T seven.
No.
No.
Your first motion was to put them as a group. Your second motion is going to be to approve them as a group.
Yep. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to take those items, T one to T six, T eight, nine, ten.
For approval. Do I have a second on that? By Ms. LaRusso. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Thank you very much, Mr. Groden. Correspondence not listed at this time. Mrs. Riley, do we have anybody for? We have contact information on the sheet? Thank you. Yeah, you can. Mrs. Mendavi, I just have to read my little statement real quick before you. Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and matters of public interest. In order to permit the fair and orderly expression of public comment, following rules shall govern and will be administered by the presiding officer. Please note that the first public comment period of forty-five minutes maximum duration will be at the beginning of the meeting and a period of fifteen minutes maximum at the end of the meeting. Either period may be extended by a majority vote of the board. Neither public comment period is a time for public discussion. If necessary, the community member will be contacted for follow-up. If you wish to speak, place your name, email, indoor address and telephone number on the sign-in list indicating the topic of your comments. Prior to making your comment, state your name for the record. Identify any group or organization you represent. Comments are limited to three minutes or less per speaker. A speaker may not yield his or her time to another speaker in order to extend the time for comment. No speaker may comment on or identify any particular student or employee by name, position, or situation in his or her comments. All comments are to be directed to the board president or designate. Handouts or petitions are to be given only to the board president for distribution to the board. Board will receive and consider all written comments. A memo will be placed on the agenda on the next meeting under information, reports and discussions to keep the board informed of the outcomes. It will be titled correspondence outcomes and will be a public document. That was my piece. If you could just come up a little closer so the microphone can pick up your comments, ma'am? Thank you so much. That's great.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Hira Minmani. My kids go to Montesalo School Districts. I have two kids. One is in elementary, one is in middle school. I am here for the matter of my daughter that is in middle school. She has been faced with fights, physical aggression on her. And I have been in contact with school administration to have this addressed in a right way, rather than just the basic warpage. I have so far not received anything that makes me feel comfortable and makes me understand, make my daughter understand that it is safe to go to school. The most recent incident happened was as recent as two days ago. And I have been trying to contact school administration and get a proper attention to the matter, get a proper resolution to the matter. But so far I have not received anything. I'm not saying that school administration is not responding. They are responding. They are just not giving me the resolution that it needs to have. And I want to present this to the board. I have sent emails to the school administration, to the member of the board. And I have not heard from them yet. It was also as of this morning. So I do not know the turnaround time as to when I should receive anything. I've not received any acknowledgement of we have received your request, we are working on it, nothing of the sort. So I want to discuss this further. I, I am afraid that I cannot discuss this matter much in details without giving out any names or anything. So if I can have some time privately away from the public and other members, I would really like to discuss that. My daughter is scared to come to school. She hasn't been to school in past two days. She wants to go to school, but she's afraid. I am not able to say anything or do anything that would convince her otherwise. Because in the past fifteen days, it has happened twice with her. So it is very traumatic for us, my daughter especially, and as a parent to see her in this state. So I've come to the board to see if we can find a resolution. I'm looking for a written safety plan for my daughter for her to go to school. Because she wants to be educated. I want her to be educated. I want her to get education. She loves coming to school. But this past two incidents has made it really difficult for her to want to go to school. I have been trying and diligent in asking for homework and classwork, so whatever she can get her mind off of and focus on studies at home in front of me and my husband would be at least better for us right now is what the solution I'm seeing.
Somebody from the district will be following up with you in the next day or so. We have your contact information here. Somebody will be following up with you very shortly. Thank you very much for coming in and letting us.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm sorry, sir. Do you want to make public comment? Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on from that, we have adjournment. Would somebody like to make a motion? Made by Ms. Holmes, seconded by Mrs. Galligan. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Thank you very much, everybody. If you are here for a class and you need a paper.